Okay, welcome everybody to the January 30th meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. The first item on our agenda, we're just gonna skip right over because we don't have minutes for the 16th. And we'll go directly to the zoning Subcommittee Report. Mr. Crowner.
So, I guess the purpose of this report is to update you on our discussion tonight, and to further frame the decision that the Planning Board should make about what zoning amendments to pursue this spring. I hope you got and had a chance to look at your packet, the actual text of the articles that were under consideration. Last time around, we talked about them in general terms, and we requested the Planning Staff to prepare something more concrete so that we could get a better sense of what was involved and how much time it was gonna take. And so, it was very helpful to have that. I hope you had a chance to read it, to read all the potential articles. So what we decided, after looking through them, we wanted to reiterate our-
If you could hold on one second, Rob. Some of us didn't get those in our packets.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In fact, I didn't know they were available, so maybe they're on the table.
You got them electronically.
Oh, okay.
The email notice for the zoning Subcommittee meeting also goes out to the Planning Board, full board.
Oh, okay, alright. Yes, I did get the email, and I looked at them online, but I can't, paper copies. If so, if we're gonna-
Did you put together packets from email?
Do you-
Actually, I didn't pass the test.
Yeah, wait a-
I apologize for not-
No, that's okay, I didn't-
For last week, but last week was difficult.
Totally okay. I just didn't print them out, I don't think.
You want to hold on and then ask if you're not-
Alright, well, why don't we let Rob proceed while you're doing that?
Okay, sorry for the confusion there. I guess I meant, you got email versions, and said that's what we actually looked at today. So, in our discussion, we came to the conclusion that we want to reiterate our preference to work on center amendments. We introduced this preference last time, and it didn't seem like the Planning Board was really excited about it, but let me clarify, maybe we didn't make our intentions clear enough. We think that the center zoning, Village Centers and Downtown and Commercial Districts are really important to the master plan, to our future, anything that we do as far as housing and everything. So, we want to start working on that right away. Ideally, we would have something ready by the spring. We are not certain that we will, but we would like to work towards that. In any case, start working on it now so that we definitely have something ready by the fall. And with regard to the center zoning, are the areas that we're looking at are separating the form-based design standards out of the proposal that came forward last year for new Village Center zones. So separating form-based standards out, but applying them into the zoning bylaw, taking a different look, a new look at the existing Village Center boundaries and possibly redrawing them, and possibly in a more limited fashion than was originally proposed incrementally. And finally, taking a look at our commercial zone, of which we have two major areas, in North Amherst and in East Amherst, which are part of existing Village Centers, or which we imagine as Village Centers. And changing dimensions, changing building heights, number of floors, changing number of residential units that are allowed by right in a mixed-use building, and other measures that make the comm district more flexible as a place for development than it is now. Development, including residential development. So, we have, in the amendments that are being passed out, we have numbers to work with, numbers to start with. These aren't necessarily the numbers I'm gonna end with, but this is where the conversation begins. We imagine that it will take some time to work through them. We're not in agreement about where exactly the numbers should be, but that's something that we have received feedback from, that is someplace to work on, both from people who own property in the Commercial District and people who are abutting in Commercial Districts, that maybe that is something to work on. So we'd like to do that. There are a couple of other amendments that we think are easy ones, and we might as well go ahead with them. Specifically, I would point to agricultural processing, is something that shouldn't take too long. Also, LID requirements, there's an article that is headlined "Design and Development Standards." There's actually two parts to that, sustainable design, and then the second part is LID. We think the LID is something that could be done relatively easily, but the sustainable design part, not so much. So we propose splitting that up and just doing the other part. And finally, the, oh, actually, there's another one. We definitely intend to do, resolve the conflict between Articles 14 and 17 from the last Fall Time Meeting. There is, I don't know if there's paper copies of it, but there's an email suggestion, it's just a matter of eliminating Section 13 of the converted dwellings standards and conditions, and changing a little bit of language as well. That should not really take more than five minutes at a Planning Board meeting. So those three Planning Board, Planning Department-generated articles, as well as 400 Main Street, should be relatively simple to do. So we're proposing to do those. We also, there's two of the ones that are listed under "Technical Fixes," we think are worth going forward with now, even though they might take a little more time than just half an hour or a night at a ZSC meeting and/or a Planning Board meeting. That's the "Nonconforming Buildings" article, and the "Site Plan Review Waiver" article. These are both things that have been requested by Planning and Inspection Department staff as a way of encoding what is actually happening, or making it easier for the billing commissioner to implement the zoning bylaw in the way that he thinks that it should be implemented. And the proposal makes sense to us, we might need a little time to work out the language exactly. So those two things, we'd like to work on. And then there's a number of other articles that were in the packet that we think are interesting, but are not our priority for this spring. We would work on them, I guess, if you do not want us to work on center zoning, but otherwise, we probably will not have time to do them this spring. That includes perma-criteria, parking, functional family, and the student and boarding house uses, things. They all have some merit. In some cases, we would like to first meet with the ZBA, because some of these are conflicts or differences of interpretation with the ZBA, or would involve ZBA implementation of something that we would be promulgating. So, we would like to get some input there. So, we don't have a meeting scheduled, but that could be done. Again, it's not our first priority. So, in summary, what we're proposing is spending one night, or two nights, on what we're calling the "Easy" articles, and then the rest of our time on the center amendments. Ideally, working towards having something ready for the spring, but not necessarily. And finally, I guess I should mention that we have agreed to Planning Staff's recommendation that we immediately schedule the first public hearings for this spring, coming up in just three weeks. It starts now. And so we're proposing to schedule 400 Main Street and the 1417 resolution for three weeks from tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. That's a very thorough review of the what's underway. Did anyone from the, who's not on the zoning Subcommittee have questions for Mr. Crowner? Alright, let's see if there's any public comment before we deliberate amongst ourselves about these. Anyone here to speak to zoning? You obviously haven't made these controversial enough.
We can work on that.
Yes, Mr. Tucker, I know that you can. So, I guess the thing to try to do is, this is great that you've prioritized, could you repeat for me, Mr. Crowner, the so-called "Easy" articles you were talking about?
So, 1417?
Yep.
Ag processing, LID, and 400 Main.
Agricultural, 1417, agricultural processing, and 400 Main Street. Is that right?
LID.
An LID.
Which is part of-
The second part of sustain-
Right.
Oh, I see.
So not all of that, just the LID part.
Okay. Alright, so, well, let's start by looking at those easy ones. The agricultural processing use category. If anybody, I mean, my thinking is just to start to go through some of these, and decide whether we want to direct the zoning Subcommittee to proceed. Agricultural Processing Amendment would amend Section 3.372.1, light manufacturing, by adding the following language, and amending the use table. Except as may be provided for under Chapter 48, Section 3, agricultural processing regulated under this section shall be permitted through, under Site Plan Review Approval, under the BVZ LI and PRP districts only. For the purposes of this bylaw, any slaughterhouse, abattoir, or processing facility for tanning, rendering, or other direct processing of animals or their byproducts shall be permitted only in the LI district, and only under a special permit. So, I know that I actually sit on the Agricultural Commission, and one of the things that the farmers have been asking for is better agricultural processing facilities. So, I think that anything we can do to permit agricultural processing facilities would be great. Can, Mr. Tucker, did you draft us? Can you speak to your choice of language and so forth, what you're hoping to accomplish with them?
I would first note that there would be an additional category added to the list of names under the title, and agricultural processing would be one of those, probably after hardware and software, which was just missing from this particular version. This actually was developed, not just by staff, but was also work done by the consultant, this was part of the Village Center changes, and it was in response to comments by the public, who were concerned that both in North Amherst and in Atkins Corners, that there was not enough provision in the bylaw to allow supportive uses for the surrounding agricultural land. And so, this is a fairly broad category. Agricultural processing covers a lot of different things, whether you're talking about canning or whatever, the processing of agricultural products. This is the category into the bylaw where it made the most sense for it to go. As proposed, it's limited in the Village, to the Village Center business, the Light Industrial District and PRP districts as a use. It is a sort of a light manufacturing, in some cases can be a fairly heavy manufacturing use. Where it involves the use of animal products, we proposed restricting it to the Light Industrial District, which is west of Route 116, surrounded by farmland, and that seemed to make sense. We included the rest of the provisions here, so that people who were reading this could see what the kinds of limitations were on such uses. But the principle, again, the principal intent was to allow in Village Centers, small or modest-scale agricultural processing facilities. You'll note that there's a reference, except as may be provided for under Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3. Agricultural uses on farm properties of a certain size are exempt from zoning prohibition, and are essentially allowed by right in any event. So what we're doing is saying that if there's a property in the Village Center that's that big, and it's already part of a farm, then it's already allowed. This is really more of a focus on other properties in those Village Centers.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. And the zoning Subcommittee is satisfied that this is something you'd like to work on and try to bring forward for annual town meeting? Mr. O'Keefe?
Just a comment, so I agree with prioritizing it. I guess a question on the structure of this, why it's structured as part of the 3.372.1, rather than as a separate use category, because it seems to create a set of use regulations that are essentially totally different than the ones in 3.372.1, just by way of a standard and condition item, when it really seems like it might merit a full-scale use category.
It could be a full-scale use category. This is the form in which it was proposed, the Village Center changes, but it could as easily be its own section.
I like Mr. O'Keefe's suggestion as well. And so, I think that's a go on that one. I hear, I mean, I don't hear any objections to that one, so. So agricultural processing, next on the list of the easy ones, is the resolving the conflict between Articles 14 and 17 with respect to the rental management requirement. And what's the proposed fix on that?
It's to delete Paragraph 13, and to add a, some language in front of, where it says owner or resident manager, to add in front of resident manager, ongoing and professional or something like that.
Yeah, I don't believe there's actually a version of that in front of you.
Okay.
It's something we had discussed at a previous meeting.
Sure, and we knew this was gonna be an issue as soon as both of those articles passed.
Right.
It seems to me it's a no-brainer to fix it, so, unless anybody's objecting to it, I think we okay that one, too. 400 Main Street rezoning from RG to BN, that's a citizen petition, yes?
It's actually a property owner request, which is a separate category of method for getting on the warrant, but it will go on the warrant, so.
Okay, so we don't, we're not gonna be putting anything on the warrant, we're gonna be giving an up or down vote, and possibly any proposed changes that we think will-
You are obliged, as it's a zoning change, you're obliged to respond to it and issue a report to town meeting.
Alright, well then, I guess we'll do that one, too. Mr. O'Keefe?
Sorry, I guess I detect some conflict in the two sides that were presented there. So, I don't think that, the way that it was presented, that it was being presented as a citizen petition, I thought that Rob was saying that it would be presented as a board article presented by the Planning Board.
So, yeah, that's a good point. We are, we are, what our suggestion is, is that it doesn't need a lot of time to review, whether it's, whether we put our name on it, or whether we allow property owner to leave his name on it, on the article itself. So, I guess it has not, we have not really changed our opinion about whether we want to bring it forward. We don't particularly want to put our name on it, but we can. But in any case, we don't think that it will need a lot of going over, it's either yes or no.
Okay. And finally, the-
Sorry.
Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
Sorry to harp on this, but I think we need to achieve resolution on whether it needs to be a petition or not, because specifically, the deadline for submitting citizen petition articles is a week from today, and so if it's going to be a petition article, we need to tell the petitioner that, so that they're able to get it in to meet that deadline.
Mr. Tucker?
If I may, there are several methods by which a zoning amendment can get on a warrant. Petition article, where you actually go out and get signatures and so forth, is one of them. A simple letter of request from a property owner that their property be rezoned is another. And it's, letters gone to the Select Board, and that in the past, and under my understanding of how this has ever been done, that is sufficient. They don't need to get 10 signatures to get it, on a petition, to get it on the warrant, it's just the request is sufficient by itself. The Select Board can then decide what it wants to do with it, but in every precedent we have, that I'm aware of, those go on the warrant, and then the boards make the recommendations one way or the other.
So, my understanding is that the scope of our review on this 400 Main Street will be to, not to bring it to town meeting, but rather to make a recommendation on it of some kind?
It would be as if it were a petition, it's coming to you from outside, and you are obliged under state law to hold a public hearing and to make a recommendation to town meeting on it.
Mr. Crowner?
Or alternatively, we could say that we want to take ownership of it, because it is requesting zoning to BN, which is a very recent innovation by the Planning Board, we might say that we want to sponsor this one, we want to expand the business zone in that area, and so it is something that is our priority. That's just a suggestion, but it doesn't have to be that way. We could just respond to it.
Mr. O'Keefe?
Yeah, so I guess my preference, I've seen a few zoning change requests like this come before the Planning Board on, in my time here, and in all cases previously, we have taken them on ourselves, and I guess my preference is to sort of step back from that practice and not be the ones advocating for a specific zoning change to a specific property. I think that the burden of proof should be on the person who's requesting that specifically. You know, for a larger scale zoning change, like we've looked at Village Centers and stuff, it makes more sense to me for the board to be involved, but if you're talking about just one specific property, I think that symbolically, having that person stand behind it is a better way to move forward than having the board trying to act on that property owner's behalf.
I agree with you, Mr. O'Keefe. Any comments on that, further comments? Alright, so, we're decided that the property owner who wants this change will be the one who will need to present it to town meeting. And the scope of our review will be limited to the statutory requirement that we hold a public hearing, and possibly a recommendation should we choose to make one. And finally, LID requirements, which was the fourth of the so-called "Easy" articles, why don't you tell us a little bit more about that one?
So this was part of the Sustainable Development Design Standards, that was originally in the form-based articles, form-based Village Center articles. It's just requiring the right kind of handling of drainage and things that impact the environment. As part of, as part of the zoning bylaw, rather than as a, part of the bylaw that only applies to certain sections, it just, it should apply everywhere. And it's easy enough and obvious enough that we think we're pretty close to agreeing on the language, and that it won't take too long to resolve any issues. The first part of it, there's more controversy about, and so we don't want to do that part. Unless you want us to.
So that's on our handouts, would be Section 4.605, Low-Impact Development, LID, but not the Sustainable Design and Development Standards necessarily. I'm satisfied if you feel that this is an important piece of moving things forward, that I don't have any objection to you pursuing it. I'm okay with, alright, so if you see it as an easy one, I think we're saying go for it. Unless there's, I mean, if there's someone on the zoning Subcommittee who's opposed to any of these, you gotta speak up, too. Alright.
I realize that we impact our majority box.
So while we're, while we're on this, let's schedule those public hearings for the two that you said you wanted to schedule. We have meetings coming up. You said three weeks from today, would that be March 6th?
February 20th.
February 20th, oh, that's good. I actually won't be here for the March 6th meeting. So you want to schedule which ones for that night?
400 Main Street and 1417.
Very good. Let's make that happen, I guess. It's good to get them out of the way early. Alright, so, we, I propose that we spend another few minutes on this before we move to our first site plan review, even though we're running a little bit late. Clearly, we need to whittle down the list. We know from experience that a town meeting has a limited appetite for zoning articles, so we have to pick and choose. Was there consensus on the zoning Subcommittee about, say, the next two or three?
I'm not sure which two or three you're talking about.
Well, that's why I'm asking you.
Oh, I see, okay. So, again, our preference would be to work on the center amendments, even if it means we don't do the easy amendments. Which ones exactly we think are closest, I'm not sure. And I don't think there's a consensus about whether to prioritize Village Centers over comm, over form-based design standards. It's, it's sort of all a piece, and we're gonna talk about it, and what we're trying to do is, is make our mixed-use centers more friendly to the kinds of development that we want. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss how to best accomplish that. It may be that just tweaking the comm dimensional regulations is the best way to go, or the only thing that we can do right now. We may come to the conclusion that, that we have momentum with Village Centers, we need to, we need to continue with that momentum. So I'm not sure.
Is, when you say the mixed-use center zoning amendments, that includes this full list of ones that, we already picked two out of, and then there's, so that leaves form-based design regulations, Atkins Corner rezoning, North- And then there's, so that leaves Form-Based Design Regulations, Atkins Corner rezoning, North Amherst Village rezoning, Commercial District Amendments, Sustainable Alternative Energy, Agricultural Processing Use, Transit-Oriented Development, and Transfer of Development Rights. Anyone comments about, from anyone on the board who wants to try and talk about any of those right now? If not, I would, yes, Mr. Keefe?
So I guess I would say my perspective is that, that the priorities align, the order that they're presented on this page pretty much aligns with my prioritization of them, particularly with Transit-Oriented Development and TDR being near the bottom. Not, which is not because they're not important, but because they're going to require a lot of work, I think. And Form-Based Design Regulation seems like the most reasonable way to move ahead with a lot of the momentum that we have generated over the past couple of years with the Village Center rezoning projects. We have heard a lot of feedback from people in terms of wanting to have had that presented in a way that allowed people to look at the Form-Based aspects separately from the zoning changes. And it sounds like this would be moving in that direction. So that would probably be my highest priority of the ones listed here, with the two existing identified Village Centers that we've already worked on following behind that. And the COM changes, for me, would be a distant fourth place. I think that that's, that seems to me like another way of addressing the zoning issues in North Amherst. And I would rather deal with that in the comprehensive way that we've approached it before, rather than trying to just make changes to the COM district to, to address the specific issues in that one set of properties there. That, that would be my view of the relative importance of them.
Thank you, Mr. Keefe, Mr. Crowner?
So I actually think, we, ZSC has not discussed this, this is my opinion, that pairing Form-Based Design Regulations and COM is, is a possible avenue. Because what we're talking about is, is trying to make the Village Centers work differently than they work now. And one way of doing that is, is putting Form-Based Design on it. At the same time, so that's, that's a restriction in some sense. And then, and then, but if you're also changing the, what's allowed in COM, it's, it's a, you know, it's a balancing, it helps balance out the restrictions. And, and doing, changing the, the boundaries of existing BBC and RBC in the Village Centers is another approach. I think, I think those are actually two similar approaches. They can, they can both go forward, or either one of them go forward, I think, so.
Yes?
I'll just throw in my two cents. Your concern, I think, about not doing a more comprehensive look in, in looking at the commercial zone. But for me, having seen the town not succeed in doing the more comprehensive, looking at what, what we have now in our commercial zone and how it doesn't work, it seems more critical to kind of massage the commercial zone so that it works better and aligns better with the master plan than to hold out hope that we would be able to do something we might prefer to do that's more comprehensive. So it, it's, it underscored to me what's not working in our current commercial zone because of the history there. So I, I think it really behooves us to make the commercial zone fit better for modern times.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Anyone else? Mr. Keefe?
I don't disagree with that. I just think that that might be difficult to get through town meeting. Which is not to say that it's not worth trying, but- Really? Because my check hasn't been called yet.
They, they tripled our pay last year, didn't you get the rate? Okay, so I hear, I, I kind of, I kind of like the combination of Form-Based Design combined with Commercial District Amendments as being sort of a possibility. So, Mr. Tucker?
The pieces that we have here are creating a set of Form-Based Design Regulations that would apply to all mixed-use zoning districts, period. You can do that and not change any boundaries or do anything else. Creating overlay districts that have Form-Based Design Regulations that are specific to villages, and we have those for North Amherst and we have those for Atkins Corners. Changing the rules in the Commercial District, which we need to do anyway, and it's a question of timing and what happens when you combine that with other things. And I think the approach of changing zoning boundaries in the existing Village Centers using the existing districts, if, for instance, substantial amounts of what is now commercial zoning in North Amherst and in East Amherst instead became Village Center business, you would have accomplished many of the things you can do in the other ways. So many of these pieces are sort of interchangeable and it's a question of what would be least confusing to people. We have, rather than doing what we did before, which was trying to create brand-new districts which combined use changes and strangely-named design regulations that wasn't clear how they worked, and they were different in some districts and Village Centers they were in others. Instead of doing that, taking the familiar pieces, moving them around a little bit, and just adding some standard but new design regulations, I think that would be within town meeting's ability to bite off and chew and hopefully swallow.
Yes, Ms. Ford?
So, you know, I'm pretty much agreeing with what everybody's saying. And the one piece that I think, in my opinion, might be the stumbling block or the piece that might be overwhelming is the, kind of the, the general overlay district concept that's, that's beyond Atkins Corner, beyond North Amherst. It seems to me that if we could focus on the Form-Based zoning regulations, you know, maybe look at the boundaries for the commercial districts, but, and then, you know, use Atkins Corner and North Amherst as the ground that where we're, it's kind of the testing ground for, for this, then go to overlay district. I would put overlay district, somehow I want to separate it. That's just, that's a thought right now that might, might be something to consider. That, that, you know, it's just, it's, it's that much more general. And I think that, you know, we really do want to, I mean, the Form-Based zoning is general enough and we want to find ways to make it more concrete instead of making it even more general at this point in time. So, you know, that would be my thought at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring Mr. Rosnoy's comments before the board. Mr. Rosnoy couldn't be present tonight, but he did submit some written comments. The one that's relevant to the zoning subcommittee is a general request, actually, it's a specific request, that the board tried to craft some type of mechanism to accommodate, and I'll quote him, "The crying need for additional non-single-family housing for our current residents and for those who would like to move here." And that's something that's come up on the board before, that the one thing the master plan didn't do is say, where can we put more people? So, other than into existing neighborhoods. So I know that that's not necessarily something that's been proposed in any concrete sense, but I would urge the board to take it into context when trying to consider these other ones. The other one that I wanted to, we did have a constituent write-in and ask that we seriously consider transfer of development rights. Was there a reason why you moved it to the bottom of the list? Because we did have, we did ask for assistance from the PVPC on this, and they came in and we, and actually drafted us some proposed regulations. I know there was a meeting before the HONCOM recently, Dave Zomack has been a big backer of this. TDR, so I was just a little, I mean, I was thinking that that would be on the list of, on the to-do list. So was there some opposition on the ZSC to proceeding with that? Mr. Crowner?
Yeah, there was opposition. So it's not, there's, there's a difference of opinion about whether the purpose of TDR is mainly for land conservation or it's mainly for allowing densification somehow. So there's, there's that. It's both, yeah, it is both. But, but what's the, you know, what is, what is the effect going to be? What's, what's going to be the, the primary effect? And, and so there's that. And then there's also the fact that, that it's, it's definitely complicated. And if we're concerned about introducing complicating factors to town meeting, you know, that's a reason not to do it. I, I guess I'm in the minority on the ZSC on that. I would, I think it is worth pursuing, I think it's very interesting and, but, you know, I'm going to respect my colleagues. They don't really want to do it, but, but if you guys want to do it, let's do it.
Mr. Tucker?
Part, part of the discussion, and the, the subcommittee members should jump in here if I misemphasize things. Part of the discussion revolved around how you use TDR to, quite aside from its preservation role, how do you use it to densify things? And there are a couple of different ways of approaching that. You can lower the potential density so that you come up with the TDR, you come up to what you want as the end product regardless. You can create what you want as the end product and allow this to go beyond it. And the, I, I heard a kind of consensus, and again, this is where I want to be corrected if I'm wrong, among the committee members that, the subcommittee members, that they thought that the planning board should really, in crafting zoning that spoke to density, should ask for what the town needs in the, in the basic rules themselves, rather than getting into complicated machinations about, if we use this, we, then we get this. There were different, there were some circumstances in which the subcommittee thought, I think it would be useful to use incentive issues. Specifically, when we were talking about the sustainability and the alternative energy design, where you were talking about things that could substantially increase the cost of development to someone. One of the ways in which you could offer an incentive was, if you do this, then you get more of that. But that's, that's different from TDR, which also adds the complicating fact of you're transferring something remotely if you're doing it that way. Or you're paying into a kitty for future preservation and that payment gets you increased density. And then the question comes, which way do you do it? Do you drive it down so that you can bring it back up to where you want it? Or do you set where you want it to be and then allow things to go beyond that? And that's a little more fraught than some of the other things. And I think the subcommittee sort of said, well, you know, let's see what we can do with the basic rules. That was my sense of it. If I'm wrong, I wish to be told that.
It's a good summary.
All right, with that, yes, Ms. Kruger? Okay. With that in mind, I think, due to time constraints, I think we're going to have to table the, the prioritization with one exception, which I think, I would like to suggest that with respect to the technical amendments, that is to say permitting for non-conforming properties and site plan review waiver amendment, I'd like to suggest that the full board just address those directly without sending them through the subcommittee. Those are not so much zoning issues as they are procedural. And I don't see that role of the zoning subcommittee as having to address that sort of thing. It's a request from staff that I think the full board can just take those on directly. Any objection to that? So let's put those on the agenda for the full board at some point. All right.
Bonanza.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you to our applicants for being patient with us. We have tonight a site plan review. The first one's going to be Bank of America. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on this proposed site plan. SPR 2013 00006, M16171, One South Pleasant Street. Adams and Ruxton Construction Company for Bank of America, requesting site plan review approval for construction of new ADA compliant ramps and sidewalk. This is map 14A, parcel 255, in the BG zoning district. First question, do we have any board member disclosures on this? And if that's not the case, we'll move directly to the applicant's presentation. So whoever's presenting, come on up to the microphone and tell us what you're doing. We have your papers, so let us know the-
So I guess simply, we want to construct, remove first wall and construct new sidewalks.
Could you identify yourself, I'm sorry? Thank you.
So again, simply, we would like to, uh, remove the existing sidewalk in front of the building and replace it with new sidewalk that complies with the ADA-
The TV folks are asking you to speak a little bit more closely to the microphone.
It might need to be turned on. Can you make sure it's on?
Good, it's good.
There's a switch on the bottom of it? Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now? All right, so this is better, right? Okay. So again, we'll, on the front of the building, we'll be removing and replacing the sidewalk that it's basically ADA compliant. Basically by not having it be more than 2% grade on either side. And moving to the back of the building, we'll be doing basically the same. We'll be removing sidewalk that's adjacent to the building, make it a little bit wider.
Amherst Media, you could turn the room speakers down a bit, we're getting a little bit of feedback here.
Yeah, stand back a little bit, they're very sensitive, right? And again, in the back of the building, we'll be removing what's there now, replacing it with a bit wider sidewalk that conforms to the pitch and, and again, is ADA compliant. In addition to that, we'll be removing some of the asphalt, re-milling it, and removing some of the dips and bumps that's there existing. And once again, making it nice and flat and make it comply with the ADA code. In addition to that, we'll be removing some of the existing guard rail and also putting new signage as well for ADA parking and such.
Thank you, Mr. Campos. It is a fairly straightforward, mostly, it's all paved, there's nothing else.
Nothing else, correct.
And, Mr. Foley, did you have anything to add?
No, sir.
I'll go to our site visit, which was held on Monday. The board members reviewed the, the location of the project, which is right next to Amherst Cinema in the center of town. It's more or less at the center of town, directly across from us here at the town hall. It's a flat site. It's paved all around. And the back of the building has been, well, it used to be pretty closed in, now it's open to the Amherst Cinema area. And not much else to report as far as the site visit unless someone who was there wants to chime in. Do we have any comments or questions from the board on this project? If not, I propose that we address any additional questions- If not, I propose that we address any additional questions in the course of our site plan review criteria. The, just for reference, this is just a paving project, so the applicant has requested waivers from the landscape plan, lighting plan, soil erosion plan, and traffic impact statement. According to staff, the, the thing we might want to request, questions about would be primarily about, let's see. No, there aren't really any concerns. The D, Design Review Board reviewed this, and memorandum's attached to our papers, it's on the table if anybody wants to review it. And the Design Review Board recommended approval on this project with the condition that the new concrete at the front entrance be extended to include the area up to the outermost columns on either side of the front door. Was that something you were amenable to?
That's right. And value of us.
Okay. We have some signage to reflect the handicap parking and bank customer parking. We have a management plan, we have the, the parking design plan that was submitted to Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Crowner?
Is it safe to assume the bike rack will go back in front of the bank when it's done?
Yes. I mean, if it's there, it will be back. It's actually in one of the pictures, I noticed.
Yeah. And I use it sometimes.
Okay. So, these are the criteria that we use to review a site plan. It's Section 11.2 of the zoning bylaw, the first section being 11.240, general requirements, conformance with all appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw, staff is represented, Protection of town amenities, abutting properties through minimizing, this inapplicable 2401. 2402 is inapplicable. 2403 is inapplicable. Environmental, did we have a report from the town engineer as far as drainage? Is there any changes to drainage on the site as a result of this?
We did not have a report from the town engineer about this.
However, it's a flat site, and no, no one during the site visit noticed any concerns about drainage. Have there been any problems with drainage in the past, to my knowledge? Acceptable. 2414 landscaping is inapplicable. 2415 soil erosion plan, any objection to the waiver? We'll grant the waiver. Protection of adjacent properties by minimizing air and water is, nothing's really changing. 2417, nothing's changing. 2418, not applicable, or extent of paving is acceptable. 2419 wetlands is inapplicable. 2420, the Design Review Board has signed off on this. 2421, everyone's okay with the new parking space design with the two handicap spaces. So, that's acceptable. The parking plan is good. 2422 inapplicable. 2423 inapplicable. 2424 inapplicable. 2430, there's no change to the traffic pattern in and out of that driveway?
No. It's basically the same layout, right back. Yeah, the same striping.
Okay. And we have a bicycle rack that's going to remain or be replaced. 2431 curb cuts is not changing. 2432 parking spaces, bicycle racks, again, that's fine. 2433 access is not changing. 2434 is inapplicable. 2435 is inapplicable. 2436, we're okay with waiving the traffic, traffic impact report. That's it. So, what we have is a very straightforward site plan review, well presented and appears to be complete in every respect. Does anyone want to make a motion on this? Mr. Crowner?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Any further discussion on the site plan review? Comments from the public? Comments from the board? All right. Mr. O'Keefe?
I move that the board approve site plan review 2013-0006, M16171 for One South Pleasant Street, Adams and Ruxton Construction Company for Bank of America with the waivers requested and with the standard conditions that the board applies to its permit.
Were we going to do a condition on the Design Review Board's thing, or is that just something they're going to do?
It's already incorporated.
It is. Okay, yes. Ms. Brestow?
I believe it's not incorporated in the latest plans that we have, so it's probably a good idea to put a condition on.
Okay, so we'll put a condition in, the condition that the Design Review Board proposed as to the paving in front.
That's acceptable.
Can we also put a condition that the bike rack definitely comes back?
And there's a condition that the bike rack remains.
With that as well, yes.
All right, because there's a bike rack, there's a bike leaned against the wall in one of these pictures, actually. All right. Anything else for discussion? Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We appreciate your patience and time.
Thank you.
So, the trains background schedule?
Yeah. It's 8:02. That brings us to our second public hearing, which we have Stavros here tonight. This is SPR 2013 00008, M16536, 210 Old Farm Road, Stavros Center for Independent Living. Requesting site plan review approval for installation of a 70 kilowatt standby generator placed on an existing concrete pad behind an existing solid wood fence. Map 18C parcel 91, PRP zoning district. And do we have any board member disclosures on this? Hearing none. Welcome. You can speak to your plan. Just identify yourself and tell us what you're doing.
Well, okay, anyway, I'm starting saying who I am. The microphone?
For the TV audience, it's not for us.
I'm Jim Curateneer, and I'm the executive director at Stavros for 22-plus years now. And this is Darren, who is our chief financial officer, and she's been at Stavros for 29 years?
Thirty-something.
Holy smoke. And this is Diane Dempsey, who is, who manages our fiscal intermediary program. And the fiscal intermediary program processes payroll for some 12,000 or so people who work as personal care attendants around the state. I mean, a lot of them are right here in this area. We have about 4,000 people in the Pioneer Valley who use personal care attendance when you look at all our programs. And we have a contract with the state to process the payrolls of all of these people who employ PCAs, and every week, we're issuing about 6,000 to 7,000 paychecks. People get paid every two weeks, so the total is between 12,000 and 14,000. The state is very concerned that the payroll gets done in a timely way. State law requires us to process a properly executed timesheet within five days. We need to get the timesheets from the previous two weeks out by Friday. And so, the state required us to develop a continuity of operations plan in the event that there was a significant disaster that would stop us from, from operating. And so, it was really underlined to us, in fact, by the snowstorm that occurred, not this previous Halloween, but just the one, just the Halloween before. And we were very fortunate. We did not lose power for more than about eight hours, but a lot of places in Amherst did. And had we lost power for three days, we wouldn't have been able to process those timesheets in a timely way, to say the least. And that means that thousands of people, including, you know, probably hundreds of people right around Amherst, wouldn't have gotten their paychecks. And a lot of those folks are, need the checks for the rent and groceries and car payments and all that kind of stuff. I mean, it's a, it's a high-pressure operation for us. So, what we have been exploring and what we want to do is put in a generator, which will be feed off the gas line, which, which goes into the building, so that in the event that there is a significant power outage, we will be able to keep going. The generator itself will power the operations in our, in the wing of the building that houses our fiscal intermediary operations, as well as keeping the building as a whole, hot water through the pipes, that sort of thing, so that if it's in the middle of winter and very cold, unlike tonight, things won't be so bad and, and we won't sustain significant The generator itself is placed outside. What we're doing is taking an old set of fans essentially that are on an existing concrete path that's been there for 35 years behind an existing wooden fence that's been there for 35 years. We're taking those fans out and putting the generator there, so that from the street, I mean, you literally have to walk up to the fence and look over to see what's there. And so, from the street, there is no sense that anything is different at all. The generator itself has a decibel level of about 62?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one. When it's in operation, which we don't anticipate having, hardly ever, but of course, you never know. However, it needs to be tested once a week and run for about 15 minutes. The decibel level is constant throughout. It doesn't surge at the beginning, or in the middle, or in the end. It can be tested at any time on a, on that weekly basis, so whatever is convenient for the community, for neighbors, is fine with us. That's not a big deal. That decibel level is, as I understand it, about the level of an ordinary conversation, and is significantly lower than the town bylaw governing noise for outdoor music or recorded music at parties, that sort of thing. So, we don't think in any way that it will be disruptive to folks. It certainly won't change the appearance of things, and it will allow us to make sure that we are able to pay these thousands of folks who depend on us for getting them money. You want to add other stuff?
I think you've covered very well. I have nothing to add.
An excellent presentation. Thank you very much. And that's, certainly, it sounds like it will improve your ability to meet your deadlines and so forth if something were to happen. We do have a report from our site visit, which is that this is in the Professional Research Park next to Amherst Woods, and the site is flat and landscaped, and there is a fence surrounding the proposed installation. There's a concrete pad in place on which a air conditioning is, unit is sitting. The air conditioning unit's going to be pulled out and a generator put in its place. Were there comments from anyone?
Actually, there, there is nothing on the second cement pad right now. The air conditioning unit is on the second pad, so it's already empty.
I see. Okay. I understand. Was anyone who went to the site visit have any comments? Do we have anyone here from the public to comment on this? Oh.
I have a comment.
Yeah, yes, Ms. Kruger?
I wasn't on the site visit.
Okay, sure, Ms. Kruger, go ahead.
I, I very much support the, the generator, and I, I think it's critical, and I understand that the installation of the generator itself isn't going to change the appearance, but looking at this application, there's a landscape maintenance section, and it says no changes. And I want to say this with as much respect and admiration for Stavros as, as I feel, but I drive by your site probably four to eight times a day, because I am in the adjacent neighborhood off of Kestrel and Hop Brook. And I keep hoping that the landscaping maintenance is going to improve, and especially the side that is on Old Farm Road. And I, I understand that you're a nonprofit and money's tight, but since you've taken over that site, there's been some sort of just deteriorating parts, and it would be, and because, we, we actually get to look at everything, because you're here before us for site plan review, and I know the generator isn't changing things, just want to encourage maybe a walkabout in the thinking about the way that side of the building presents to the general neighborhood and to the ongoing traffic, because it could use attention.
There's a perfectly reasonable comments that often goes through my mind, and then it slips away during the day. But nevertheless, that's a very good point, and we will be looking at that this spring. It would be nice to get things a little nicer there.
Good suggestion.
Did someone else have their hand up? Who are you working with to install this?
Marney Electric in Florence. We did our job, and we got three bids, and we thought their bid was the best that we were looking for. And this generator is going to operate only, as Jim said, the payroll part of the business, not the whole business.
Right.
Because it's quite expensive, and we just want to stay within our budget. And they are waiting for the approval before they can even order the generator.
This is a very large capacity generator, 70,000 watts.
Well, yeah. We have, I forgot now how many, we have big network, and we have three big giant servers.
Right, and we have 40-plus computer stations, a telephone system, and we have power, the boilers for the heating for our wing and to keep heat going through the rest of the building.
There are about 48 of us in that wing, and if the power goes off, we have to keep shop open within 48 hours. That's what the state regulates us. So, we just want to function just like there is no power outage. So, that will really be a big relief for us.
Does the, so you're getting, it's going to be natural gas powered off the existing? And the, has the, have you talked to the gas company that it'll supply sufficient?
Yes. They only want to change the meter, but the gas, we, they checked the volume of the gas, and they said everything is fine.
Anything else? All right. Perhaps we should close the public hearing. May I so move?
Second.
Further discussion?
Excuse me, who seconded?
I did.
All right. All in favor? Closing the public hearing, that's unanimous. So, were there any further questions at all before we just go through the site review criteria? Given the limited scope of this one, where are my criteria? All right. Oh, by the way, did we have any comments from the, the fire chief or the engineer on this one?
No, we didn't.
And we have requests for waivers of everything that can be waived. Right? All five? All right. So, these are the site review criteria guidelines. We'll go through them quickly. We'll go through them quickly. Please speak up because I'll be paying attention to my paper here. So anyone on the board has a comment, please speak up. 11.2400, conformance with all appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw, check. 2401, protection of abutting properties. The noise from this is proposed to be quite reasonable, and it's behind a fence. Although we did have a comment about the improving the landscaping, that's not actually part of the, it's not actually changing as part of this project. 2402, adequate. 2403 is not applicable. 2410 is not applicable. 2411, not applicable. 2412, not applicable. 2413, there's no changes to drainage. 2414, acceptable. 2415, not applicable. 2416 is acceptable. 2417 is, there's no changes to lighting. 2418 is not applicable. 2419, actually, 2418, protection from flub hazards, this actually assists in protection from that sort of thing, so this is good. 2419, wetlands isn't applicable. 2420 is not applicable. 2421, no changes. 2422, not applicable. 2423, not applicable. 2424, screening is adequate. 2430, not applicable. 2431, not applicable. 2432, not applicable. 2433 is not applicable. 2434, not applicable. 2435, 36, and 37, we're going to waive the traffic parking studies. Anything else?
Do we want to specify what time of the day they should do their once-a-week test?
Right, I was going to ask that question. Good point.
It'd be between 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Does that seem reasonable?
Does anyone have any comments on that? I'm content to leave it up to the applicant. I don't have any. I don't, I don't think we need to do that.
It's really just the one house across the street that is the abutting neighbor that, yeah, I would leave it up to Starros to communicate directly with the neighbor, figure that out.
I'd prefer that you do it at a time that's convenient to you, that won't interfere with your operations.
Probably sometimes during the week, definitely. In a not-too-busy time of the week. Maybe Thursday or a Friday.
We could say during, you know, during normal business hours. So it just puts that into the permit that it's not going to be Sunday or 10 o'clock at night. Not that, I think that would happen, but it seems like a reasonable condition.
For testing?
Yes, for the testing, for that big, whatever that noise is.
Which would be 12 minutes once a week.
It's actually two houses that are.
There are two, yeah.
It's quieter than a lawnmower, so it's probably less disruptive than somebody mowing your lawn. Yes, Ms. Breschow?
Do you think that'll be a condition? That it be tested during normal business hours?
During normal business hours, I guess we'll make that a condition. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, what was?
Was there?
Did someone move?
We close the hearing.
We close the hearing. Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
I move that the board approve site plan review SPR 2013-0008, M16536 for 210 Old Farm Road, Starros CIL, with the condition that the generator tests take place during normal business hours and with the board's standard conditions.
And the waivers.
And with all the waivers requested.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We wish you well.
Good luck.
And I applaud you for taking emergency response measures in advance of the next storm.
Thank you.
I know that all those people, depending on their paychecks, will appreciate it. All right, we've got 10 minutes till our appearance from Toby Cohn Family Investments. Perhaps we could move to old business for a moment. I have on my agenda, and I must have misplaced it, a letter to the ZBA with respect to 179 North Hampton Road from the Wilson Properties Group.
Excuse me, that was one of the things that didn't, that wasn't accomplished this week. I apologize for that. I'll have it ready for next week.
All right. The next item is the master plan implementation committee. I will begin with Mr. Rosnoy's comments on this subject, which is that he would like to be the representative. Actually, he thinks that the master plan implementation committee should be tabled. So clearly, it has not been a high priority thus far. Mr. Rosnoy's comments are that the individual committees already in existence are proceeding to implement the master plan already. The plethora of committees, actually. So we don't want to bleed our municipal reservoir of volunteers. Does anyone on the board? We discussed this once before and just tried to find anybody who was willing to serve as the planning board representative, and it need not be a member of the planning board. It can be someone that we designate. Has anyone come up with any volunteers for this?
So there is a specific single committee, master plan implementation committee?
Proposed by the planning board to the select board.
Okay, so there is a group of individuals and this does exist?
It exists on paper, but it has not yet been populated and has not done anything.
I believe that ours would be the first individual, but even so, they would need to actually request that they be appointed by the select board, I believe. So we can't actually appoint, we can recommend.
I could recommend Bill Gillan. He was on the original committee, development committee. He might be a good person to.
Well, Bill's great. I would certainly welcome your recruiting him for that purpose.
I will give one. Oh, wait a sec, I think we need to.
Not that we would necessarily recommend him, but he's a candidate.
So I would tend to think somebody either on the planning board or very recently on the planning board or angling to get on the planning board. So in other words, I think a very strong connection to the planning board would be kind of a critical criteria.
Why so?
Because there are design, there are designees. And so I think that being part of the pulse of the planning board, and not that Bill, I think Bill's a fantastic presenter.
Yeah, I just, it just, the link is there to the master plan, but I do see your point. It's a good point. Yeah.
So it's really intended to be either a planning board member or designated, which is somebody designated by us.
All right, so Richard said he doesn't want to do it. Is that, I missed that part.
I think Richard's position is that he thinks the committee should not exist and is advocating us to not agree with that.
I just thought, having read Mr. Rosnoy's position, that we just had a minute to step back and affirm or not, reaffirm, our desire to have this committee happen. And it seems like, you know, just kind of the unfortunate time lapse that happened between the adoption of the master plan and the enthusiasm, and now coming back to this committee. I think if we're going to go ahead, we should just articulate what we think is important about it and how we see it functioning. For me, I think there should be a checkback to, are we doing the things in the master plan? Where are there gaps? What maybe is already getting outdated? What's been done? But I don't know if that's enough to really energize a whole committee. There should be a look back continually to the master plan and a way to report back, but just, I just think Mr. Rosnoy's letter is a chance to say why we think it's important to have this committee since it's been such a long time.
Yes, Mr. Carson?
I would agree with Richard that I think it could be a purpose of the planning board to maybe once a year issue this report. And maybe we could schedule a regular meeting once a year to talk about how are we proceeding with the master plan and what we could do next year to do better, what we've already done. I don't think it needs the whole committee.
Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
I guess I would picture the committee as taking a slightly larger role than just reporting, observing. I read back, I went back to the master plan and looked at the chapter on implementation just to sort of refresh in my own memory what it was that the community as a whole is supposed to be doing in terms of implementation and specifically what this committee is for, because this committee is one of the action items called for in that implementation chapter. And the language in the master plan does speak to sort of observing and reporting on what has taken place, but it also speaks to coordinating various town bodies and boards and committees and departments and prioritizing what steps should be taken and trying to not necessarily take the steps themselves, but encourage other people to take the steps that need to be taken. So I guess I do see a need for something along those lines. I don't think that it is something that we just can deal with in 15 minutes at a planning board meeting once a year to say, okay, check off a bunch of things that I've done with regard to the master plan this year. I guess I think that, I still think that it was a valid board to have.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Anyone else on the board care to chime in on this? I can see both sides of the issue. I don't have a strong pull either way. Seeing as we proposed it, I think that we should still consider at least choosing someone to represent us in the event that the rest of the board gels. In fact, I think it's not going to gel unless we appoint somebody.
Perhaps, that could be true, or it could. So I guess, I don't see this as a pressing action item for us right now. We don't necessarily have to sort of found the committee and be the first person on it. And I think that Mr. Rosnoy is correct in stating that there is a dearth of ready and willing people in the community who are going to jump forward and volunteer for yet another committee in town. So we have committees all over town that have trouble recruiting, getting enough members. So if it turns out that this committee is sitting out there for months after its formation without people coming forward, there's other seats on the committee beyond our own, so if the committee can never even constitute itself, then we might at some point in the future come back and say, either then push for something to happen with other people, but we can't control the seat beyond our own. There's seven or eight other seats on the board, so.
So would, yes, Ms. Breschow?
I could put this on the agenda for your next meeting, which is February 6th, and I could put it near the top, right after the zoning issues. So Jonathan Tucker would be here to talk to you about this. I think he's a little, he's more in tune with the nature of this committee than I am. But that would give you an opportunity to think about it for another week and then talk about it among yourselves at that time. And I think Richard is going to be back next week.
Well, I'd be inclined to give it more time than that, to be honest with you. Does anyone have a strong urge that we need to do this as soon as possible? That wasn't really what I was hearing. Let's, I don't know, how about March 20th? Unless we choose to reschedule. All right.
In the meantime, it was pointed out that, in reference to Bill, that there are three out-large, or several out-large members, so you should talk to Bill about putting in, if he's interested, for one of the out-large.
I just, it came to mind, I can't say for sure whether it is, but yeah. I'll mention it next time.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, Mr. Schreiber. All right. The next item on our agenda, we have some folks here tonight from Toby Cohn Family Investments. This is requested on our part for an appearance on ZBA application FY 21201300014 for a special permit to extend, alter, and enlarge a pre-existing non-conforming use by adding 54 apartments to the presidential apartments under section 9.22 and 3.323 of the zoning bylaw at 950 North Pleasant Street, map 8A parcel 1, in the neighborhood residential zoning district. Thanks so much for coming in. Why don't you give us a little talk about what you're doing? We're really looking forward to hearing from you. It's probably the best map that anyone's ever brought in for us.
It's the biggest, if not the best.
The biggest.
Yeah, full scale.
We're just reviewing this, we're not.
Oh, yeah, I should mention that our review of this is purely advisory. We don't have any up or down vote on this. We ask to see this because we find it to be, well, it's a large project. And as a planning board, we, you know, sort of oversee the zoning bylaw, make changes as needed, so we appreciate your coming in and filling us in on what you're doing.
And we're pleased to be here to try to explain to you what it is we have presented to the zoning board of appeals and what we hope to build here. I'm Peter McConnell, I'm a lawyer with Bacon, Wilson, and Amherst. With me tonight is Mike Schaefer, the engineer, site engineer from Huntley, Alan Cohn, who is the owner, and Tom Reedy, another lawyer in our office who's assisting on this. Basically, the application before the zoning board of appeals is to add 54 residential units to presidential apartments. Presidential apartments located.
I'm going to take the microphone with you, if you can. I'm not sure you'll be able to. You want the folks at home to be able to hear you.
Presidential apartments is located right here. This is the tract of land we're speaking of. This is north. Basically, in the neighborhood, there's North Village, which is owned by the University of Massachusetts, directly to the north of us. Puffton Village is just to the north of that, and then Brandywine and Townhouse are to the north of that. And Crestview is across the street. So that sort of orients you as to where this is. This map, we can get it up closer for you, but basically shows the numbers of units within the area where we're operating. And there's roughly 1,100 rental units in this area that we're discussing. So that's the neighborhood that we're in. And the application is to increase the presidential apartments by 54 units. 12 of those units are proposed to be one-bedroom units, and 42 of them are proposed to be two-bedroom units. They will be contained within nine buildings. Some of those buildings are actually stuck together, so that you could look at it as six or nine, but that is the proposal. The history here very quickly is that in 1963, Alan's father applied for a special permit for the zoning board of appeals. It was granted to construct 85 units. He did construct those 85 units. In 1966, as soon as those were done, he applied for a permit, special permit, to construct another 60 units. That application was approved. However, because of health and some other reasons, Mr. Cohn never built those units. Sometime, or prior to the mid-'70s, the zoning bylaw allowed apartments to be built in the RN zone, which this is, with a special permit. Sometime in the mid-'70s, the bylaw changed and they were no longer allowed within the zone, and that's why we're here, or before the ZBA, to expand a pre-existing non-conforming non-conforming use, but not simply for a special permit for apartments. So, one of the things that the Zoning Board of Appeals asked us to look at is, how do you meet the zoning bylaw if these were allowed in the unit, in the zone? How close do you come to meeting today's zoning bylaw? And we actually meet it, this proposal meets it in every respect, except for the use, which is not allowed in the zone anymore. The frontage, it was built on 50 feet of frontage. And it does not meet the mix of units that the bylaw calls for. We're not supposed to have any more than 49% of the units the same size. We have more two-bedroom units than one, and we have more than 50% two-bedroom units. In all other respects, height, setback, parking, coverage, open space, the bylaw has met. The other things that we're asked to look at for apartments is the suitability of the location. Your bylaw requires that we look at, is it, or dictates that it be located on a heavily traveled roadway. I believe North Pleasant Street will qualify for that. We should be close to a town center or educational use. We are very close. We're butted by UMass on two sides of both north and south, and we are within walking distance of the university campus. And we should be in an area that is already developed for multifamily homes. And I think that there's no question that this area is already developed for multifamily homes. We believe the proposal will fulfill a need in town to provide good, new, decent, well-run housing. The letters we've received from the police department and others clearly show that for almost 50 years, the Cohn family and the Caymans family, who was the property managers, have run this property effectively, safely, and they've been a good neighbor. So, we believe that it's properly located in a good spot. It is something that will fulfill a need of Amherst. And so, the next thing we did was we took a look at the master plan that was, I think, finally prepared in 2010. And we looked at, how does this fit into the objectives of the, of the master plan, and does it, does it fulfill those criteria or suggestions? And the answer is, yes, it does quite well. One of the, I'm sure you all remember, because you all worked on it, but is that we should focus on already developed areas for our expansions. This is an already developed area. We should support the creation of taxable student housing that will lessen the pressures on residential neighborhoods. As you all know, we have a lot of pressure on our neighborhoods now. These 54 new units will relieve some of that pressure. Won't solve the problem, but it certainly will relieve some of that pressure. We should preserve and expand the number of affordable and moderately priced rental units in the housing stock. We are doing that. These are, will be moderately priced units. And six units will be affordable. They'll be deed-restricted affordable units. We should actively promote alternative modes of transportation. There is a bus stop in the front of this complex, and there is, it is within walking distance of the university. And hopefully, soon, this proposed bike path, you can see it in red to the Westerly side, will connect at least North Village to the university, and probably will collect, connect Meadow Street to the university. But it runs across the back of our property. The units will go back almost to that trail. It is roughed in at the moment with gravel, but it is not really suitable for bicycles yet. We're hoping that that all comes together pretty soon. It, we also should promote greenways and walkways to tie neighborhoods to public spaces. We believe that that plan does it, and we are within walking distance of the university. We are also directed by the, by the master plan to use infill, to try to not develop new projects, but infill, and I think this is a perfect example of, of that infill. So, I think that in, in respect to the land use and the transportation part of the master plan, I think this project fits it perfectly. One of the issues that everybody discusses is traffic. And Mike Schaefer from Huntley has prepared a traffic study that he can discuss with you if you would like. The traffic increase we've determined is quite minimal. Rather than do the standard traffic study with having the counts done and apply it to the book, how many trips a day this particular type of unit would, would generate, we decided that since we had a known quantity, we know how many cars come in and out, if we count. We know how many cars come in and out of Presidential now. So, it's proximity to the university, it's proximity to a bus stop, all are known facts. And so, what we did was, or what Mike did, was to count the cars north and south on two different days, one when school was in session, one when it wasn't, and count them at the intersection at Eastman Lane, where the new roundabout is, and at Meadow Street, and then added the percentage of cars that we're going to add to it. And it all comes out to be very minimal somewhere, other than at the entrance to Presidential Apartments. It is a few cars in an hour and a half. Obviously, at the entrance and exit of the complex, it increases the traffic, we say, by 64%, because we are increasing the units by 64%. But the Zoning Board of Appeals seemed quite pleased with that methodology and how we did it. But we believe the impact on traffic will be minimal. There will be five handicapped accessible apartments and six, as I said, affordable units. We've received a very supportive letter from the fire department. They tell us that the turnarounds are adequate. But more importantly, we are agreeing with the university to tie the back of North Village and this project together by a very short roadway with knockdown bollards, so emergency vehicles can do the loop if for some reason they need to. Right now, the, if you look at North Village, they go way back on some pretty, pretty narrow roads with one way in and one way out. So, this will hopefully alleviate some of that by tying those together. We have agreed with the university that we will loop our water line. They have a dead-end water line that goes back to the end of North Village. We would have the same. It improves the fire service and the quality of the water. So, we believe that the project is suitably located, that we've attended to the issues, or looked at the issues of traffic. We're complying with the parking bylaw. And we'd welcome any questions that you have of Mike, me, or the owner.
Well, let's hear from Mr. Schaefer about the traffic real quick, if you don't mind.
And one last thing. We didn't make enough for the board because we thought we were just giving them to the ZBA, but if anybody wants to look at the information that's in here, the pictures.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell.
Good evening. I'm Mike Schaefer. I'm the president of Huntley Associates, a licensed structural and civil engineer. I think, were you given, I assume you were given copies of these traffic studies in this, they were not? Okay.
Why don't you give us the overview?
Sure. Okay. What we, what we did is, as Mr. McConnell indicated, is we did traffic counts at the three various intersections that would be directly impacted by any increased traffic coming out of the Presidential Apartment entrance. Those were North Pleasant Street and Eastman Ave, and North Pleasant Street and Pine Street. And what we did is, rather than, as he had indicated, and I mean repeating it, but I'll put a little more technical into it.
Numbers would be good.
Okay. What we looked at is, we looked at the north, southbound, westbound, eastbound, turning the whole nine yards from every intersection as to where the traffic was going. And then we focused on the traffic that was coming in and out of Presidential Apartments. And we looked at it in three-hour periods, AM and PM, on two separate days, as was indicated, both in February and in August, so that when school was in full session, all schools were full in session, and when schools were not in session. And what we pretty much found out is that in the morning, the cars that were coming out and leaving out were pretty minimal, to the degree of about anywhere between 15 and 25 cars. And that the evening hour was really the, or the evening peak was really the key area of concern. And that was in magnitude of about 66 cars or so. And I have this all charted out, and you can get your copies if you need that. So, what we ended up doing is we took all these numbers for southbound in, northbound in, southbound out, northbound in. And nicely enough, this is that it was easy to see very quickly that most people were all using the roundabout exit, or as their means of egress from Presidential Apartments, as well as getting to Presidential Apartments, which was kind of nice. Nice to see, actually. And what we did is, we increased those values by 64%. So, and where that number came from was basically, we increased the number of units. So, we had raw data of the number of cars that were being used in Presidential Apartments, exiting and entering. And then we increased that by the number of increase in units that we were adding to the, to the, to the complex. Those numbers were then distributed, again, south, north, east, in, out, and then were also translated to the various intersections at the other two intersections I previously mentioned. And the net result was pretty minimal. I mean, the highest percentage, if you look at percentages, the highest percentage was four and a half percent, which was 2.6 cars in a three-hour period. And we can go with lower percentages, you know, where we may have 11 cars in another intersection, because the volume was much higher in those. So, even though we had 11 cars going through there, the overall percentage, which was much lower, like 1%. So, what we can, pretty much concluded is that other than right at the intersection, understandably, where the Presidential Apartments comes out on North Pleasant Street, the net effect on the other intersections, which we were most concerned with, is negligible.
Yeah, sure. What did you come up for, with traffic counts, as far as the roundabout and the Pine Street?
We had, so this Pine Street, at the roundabout, we had northbound through traffic, PM in February, for example, a total of 1332. And southbound, 1214, this is PM in February, those were the extremes. And then in February, or in August, rather, in the AM, we had numbers about 340 to 880 going north and south. So, most of the vehicles were all heading south, rather than coming, going north. For Pine Street, I got all kinds of numbers, because you're going left, right, all over the place. So, is there any particular number you would like to know?
Just the one coming from North Pleasant Street up to the lights, I guess, because the rest of that's, I see what you mean. There's five different directions up there.
So, you're saying going northbound from Pleasant Street?
Yeah, coming from, how about coming from Presidential to the light?
So, all right, so we have northbound through, northbound east, northbound west. So, let me see if I can total those up for you real quick. We're talking about, in the PM during February, about 1,200. For PM in August, roughly about 800. You're welcome.
No questions about traffic from the board? And thank you very much, Mr. Schaefer.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cohn, did you have anything to add? Why don't you come and say a little bit about who you, your family, and what you, how long, you know, we got the intro from Mr. McConnell, but just say hello.
Hello. My name's Alan Cohn. My dad, Louis, built Presidential in 1963. He also built Colonial Village throughout the years. We've also owned Southwood Apartments and owned Northwood Apartments. So, we've been very active in the, in the town for the last 50 years. We have always had a relationship with the Caymans family, and so we've had ongoing, you know, ongoing professional management of all of our complexes throughout the history of our ownership. And I think that's why our projects, you know, look the way they do. That's why when you see the police reports, you know, you will see that we haven't had some of the occurrences that other areas in town and other complexes have. So, we always tried to maintain the properties in the best and most respectful way to Amherst that we could. And we've seen over the years that, you know, as I'm, you know, become aware through the, through the ownership, and that the town has had a problem, because a lot of single-family residential neighborhoods have become housing multifamily illegally. And so, although there is not the opportunity, other places in town, to build additional apartment inventory, we always felt that this backland, which my dad had received approval from in 1965, was a very appropriate place because of its location in Northhammers, its adjacency to both UMass and the other complexes, and all of the public infrastructure that was available. So, I sat down with Attorney McConnell and said, you know, given the situation in Amherst right now, and the fact that multifamily housing seems to be springing up illegally in single-family neighborhoods, would this be an appropriate time for us to ask the town for permission to expand Presidential into the infill land that we have in the back? And he felt it would. So, we are sitting here right now, asking, asking you and asking other town boards if they feel it's an appropriate use.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Cohn. Did anyone on the board have, yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
I had some questions about the mix of units in the existing property. Does that follow the same ratio? You've got about 20% one-bedroom for the proposed addition, and 80 or so percent two-bedroom?
It's pretty close. We also have some three-bedrooms in the, in the first section, which we chose not to use in this new area, because we just felt that it just created too much density per apartment, per square foot, required too much parking. And I've seen situations where we have six, seven, sometimes eight kids living in a three-bedroom apartment. It's just, it just was not the right thing to do. Plus, it doesn't comply with, with the town's standards. And so, we felt it would be best to keep one- and two-bedrooms. Now, the, the reality is, if you have a two-bedroom unit versus a one-bedroom, the two-bedroom is going to be most in demand. So, we felt that that was appropriate to use that, that particular unit style, two-bedroom versus one-bedroom. One-bedrooms are hard, because from a cost standpoint, if you're living there, either you or you with a roommate, affordability becomes an issue. And so, at the same time, with construction costs going up, we want to be respectful of, of the rental market, and not be able, not have to charge considerably more than would be fair the market would allow. So, two-bedrooms allow you to do that. One-bedrooms, not so much.
So, is it typically the case that in a one-bedroom that's occupied by two people, and a two-bedroom would typically be occupied by four people?
Oh, basically. I mean, I would agree with you. I would say a one-bedroom is either one or two, depending if it's a married couple or a single person, whereas a, a two-bedroom would have anywhere from two to four people in them, depending on who shares bedrooms or, you know, who lives there, the combination of residents.
Ms. Kruger?
Hi.
Hi.
First, a couple of questions and then some comments. In choosing your architectural design, your facade, maybe you could explain, I mean, is it just because it looks like the other buildings, or what was your thinking in your design process on the appearance of the buildings?
My thinking was to maintain the architectural integrity that had been established in the first phase. So, what we did was, we took the plans that I had, that my dad had used to construct the first phase, and we had used those as basically the base, you know, the base for designing the units in the second phase. The room sizes seem to be good size, and so we maintained that. You know, so that's how we came up with it.
Okay, thanks for explaining that. I guess my comments are, I, well, I feel somewhat mixed, because I really want to applaud this opportunity to develop some more multifamily housing. And it seems like the right location. You have the land. It's already a developed area. Clearly, there's a context for this kind of housing. I'm very happy that there's affordable units, as required by the bylaw, that there's handicapped accessible units as required, I think, by... accessible units, as required, I think, by state law. I don't know what the overlap is between the affordable and the handicapped units, maybe, I mean, you can answer that in a minute.
They are, they are independent of each other.
Right, so-
We talked about this with the Zoning Board of Appeals, Attorney McConnell has to speak to, is the gentleman's name, Mr. Morris?
Who?
From the town?
Mara.
Mara, to get some clarification, but my understanding is that a handicap unit can be an affordable unit with the right qualification, but they are independent of each other.
Okay, so if you had someone who qualified for the affordable unit and needed a handicap unit, then they could have-
Absolutely.
It could then be a handicapped affordable unit?
Right, it could serve a dual purpose.
I'm very happy about the second egress that you're creating with North Village, having been over at Rolling Green when the fire vehicles and emergency vehicles blocked that one entrance last week when we had the unfortunate fire. I'm very aware of our old standards, and how not having a second way out is really problematic, so I think that's a real plus, both for your development and the, is it North Village-
Yes.
...that you're going to loop with? I'm concerned that there's no storage for any of the units, there's no recreation on site, and I guess my, I'm just disappointed that we're taking a 50-year-old development, and we're using a 50-year-old architectural style, and there's an opportunity here to have a different type of development that is keeping with 2013, that's not the site layout, that's not so car-centric, that doesn't have that same look that we did 50 years ago. So that's my own frustration, but I do support the development of the units there, but I, I was just elated and disappointed at the same time when I opened up the package, so I'll just leave it with that.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Mr. Schreiber?
So, I have a question about credentials, which is the, actually related to the question about the architecture, but you identified yourself as a structural engineer and a civil engineer, but I haven't heard any mention of an architect. Is there an architect involved?
Not at this point, no.
So, it is a state law that there be an architect be involved in a project of this scope, so I actually have to recuse myself for, from this discussion, being an architect, I can't basically aid what I feel is unlicensed practice of architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Mr. Crowder?
I'd like to follow up on the discussion of affordable units. It's, it's, it looks like you're, you're going to provide six affordable units, and I'd like to know, or I'd like to convey to the ZBA our concern about our count, our SHI count. And, so, in other words, I guess three of those would have to be accountable, but I, but I would like to point out that maybe more of them should be countable, if possible.
Could you, I'm sorry, Mr. Crowder, could you explain what a SHI is?
Sure, so, SHI is a Commonwealth's 40B subsidized housing inventory. It's, it's, you have to have a certain amount, you have to have 10 percent of units that are, that are countable under this inventory, in order to avoid a 40B development. Maybe I said that wrong.
Ms. Brestrop?
Oh, I just wanted to explain that, to be on the SHI, you need to be able to be afforded by those making less than 80 percent of the area median income, and that means those people can only spend up to 30 percent of their income on housing, on all the things related to housing.
Thank you.
So, and so, so there's two points here. One is that, as far as the planning board is concerned, and the ZBA might be concerned, is that there's talk about our, the town's level of affordable housing, the percentage of our affordable housing possibly dropping below 10 percent. And so adding 54 units, of which less than 10 percent are, are countable, is a potential concern, especially if we're going to be, if, you know, Rolling Green comes off the rolls at some point in the next few years. So, I, I would like to encourage, when we, if we make a recommendation to the ZBA, that they consider whether more should be countable. The second-
Just, can I stop you real quick, because your math doesn't match with mine, they're proposing six affordable units in a complex of 54.
Okay, right, so-
That's greater than 10 percent.
So, countable means 80 percent, so it's only, only three would have to be countable, as I understand it. Am I wrong?
Ms. Brestrop?
I think 49 percent need to be countable as 80 percent or less of the area median income. In other words, the other 51 percent can be countable as moderate income, which our bylaw defines as 120 percent or less of the area median income. So, what our bylaw defines as affordable has two categories. What the state defines as affordable only has one category, and that's the lower category. So what Rob is saying, what Mr. Crowder is saying, is that only half of the units that are being proposed to be affordable, in Amherst terms, can be counted on the state inventory. So he's encouraging the ZBA to perhaps require one or more units that would be countable on that state inventory.
Okay. I apologize for making assumptions-
No, I think it's complicated stuff.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, and so related to that, and this is completely unrelated to the project proposal, I should have mentioned this at ZSC, when we, part of the original discussion about Village Center rezoning, we, we actually talked briefly about this section in the zoning bylaw, about, about accountability, and we, we talked about, well, maybe we should come back and change that, so that, so that it's more specific, and more, our, our inclusionary zoning, you know, is, is more about accountability than, 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 than just affordability of various kinds. So, and we never, we forgot about it, we dropped it, we meant to come back to it, we didn't. So it's, it's something that is, is sort of in the air about, about, something that we might want to look at later.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Yes, Ms. Kruger?
I think that opens up a really interesting topic, because we're looking at one- and two-bedroom units, and the six affordable will, certainly the ones that we would propose to be counted on the state's inventory, would be available to families, and will be a different, potentially different population. I'm, the way you described your existing development, and the way you're planning your unit size, it sounds like it's for students, and yet we have an affordability component, which we know won't be students, or might potentially be a graduate student family. So you're mixing two populations, and I wonder, even more than counting on the 40B inventory, there's a possibility of having family-sized units, one or more three-bedroom units for a single parent with children of both genders, or something like that, because, and also I'd be interested in how you're going to manage the mix of populations, maybe you have some of that mix now in your existing development, I don't know.
The, the mix that we have now, and these numbers may not be exact, but as best Caymans could give them to us, we have 58 undergraduate units, we have 10 that are occupied by graduate students, and we have 17 that are occupied by non-students. So there, there is a mix. You know, if you go there, you do see younger people, children do live there. As far as the affordability, so we have a mix now that we would hope to continue with. The current units are 35 one-bedrooms, 46 two-bedrooms, and four three-bedrooms. That's the current phase, and as I said, we'll have 12 one, proposing 12 one-bedroom and 42 two-bedrooms. To be honest, we had a little trouble interpreting the, the inclusionary zoning paragraph, we asked for some help from town staff. Eventually, the night of the hearing with the ZBA, we did get information, or their reading of it, there's some discussion to be done about that, with percentages, proportionality of the units, that kind of thing. I have no idea, but it is possible, to answer your question, Ms. Kruger, if it's possible, we could look at a three-bedroom unit in the older section, and trading that off, and I don't know whether we can do that, just popped into my mind, but the point is that we are attempting to have an ongoing discussion with town staff as to how this bylaw gets interpreted, what's most beneficial to the parties involved, the developer and the town, and how do we comply with it and do the best we can. We have not come to any conclusions, except that the bylaw requires six units.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. O'Keefe?
I'm glad to hear those discussions are continuing, and I very much agree with my colleague, Mr. Crowder, that I hope that they will go in the direction of having more than three to be countable under SHI. The town doesn't have the opportunity very often to add dozens of units all at once, and to add dozens of units with a countable fraction that's substantially less than 5 percent, which pushes us in the wrong direction relative to 40B, so I would like to see that number be at 10 percent, or at least 10 percent, at least keep us even with where we need to be. So I hope that those discussions bear fruit, as we continue to think about that.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to just say in general terms, that I'm very happy to see, you know, a property owner coming in here and proposing to build more student housing in a place that's already devoted to student housing. We've had no end of pressure from neighborhoods, as far as conversions of single-family homes, I shouldn't use that word, student family, uh, single-family homes being rented to students or owned by outside landlords, poorly managed, and not really intended for the use to which they're being put, and not appropriate for the neighborhoods. And, you know, at the, you know, we have another member on the, on the board who, I can't claim to speak for him, but I agree with him, that we need to identify places in town where student housing can be built, where it's compatible with the existing neighborhoods and is being responsibly managed. I think that this development, you know, is as close as anything I've certainly seen in my time on the planning board, to meeting that. The design is not modern, but if it might, you know, cost is a concern, you've got a design that works, it's not broken, fix it, that's how I see that. Most likely, it was designed by an architect in the beginning, I don't know if it was.
Yes, it was.
So, as far as I'm concerned, the buildings were designed by an architect-
Some architects.
-50 years ago.
Coats have changed. We just had a terrible fire, and they were-
It'll have to be the current.
We did have the fire department saying that this was a good, that they were okay-
Yeah, the amazing thing about the fire department's letter is that not only did they say they had the turnaround radiuses, and they like to knock down bollards, and they like to turn, but they loved the idea of all of this land in the back coming out of what I think they referred it to as their inventory of brush fire area, and that this would help. So, it was, it was a very positive comment from them, and, and, I agree, I think it's a perfect place to do this. I think that the only point that I would have on the architecture is, we didn't really want to make it look like two different complexes, so it's going to hopefully flow all as one. And, and, you know, quite frankly, the, I've seen a lot of the difficulties with neighborhoods and all, and this project works. I mean, when you read the police reports, the number of calls, and you talk to the police chief, and you listen to Pat Cayman's talk about how it's managed, it really does work. And I think it is, as you say, the perfect place to add some much-needed housing.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions, the first being, were there any wetlands issues back there?
We have an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Yes, there is a lot of wetlands to the south and to the west. This property goes back almost to Route 116, and it's bounded by the, by the town of Hadley in the back half, but yes, there are wetlands there. It's a pretty tight site, but we have an order of conditions for this layout from the Conservation Commission, so we have the go-ahead on that.
I thought I had another question, but it slipped my mind. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Carson?
Will you build a connector to that bike trail if it is built?
Pardon me?
Will you build a connector to the proposed bike trail?
Oh, absolutely. It is on our land. We've had some discussions about whether we just pave the part that's on our land now to get going, and try to get people going. We pretty much decided that could be kind of silly to make that impervious pavement that can't be used. Currently, UMass has a chain-link fence up on the campus, so it's really not usable now, but it is, the gravel's there, I think it's just got to be graded again and paved. We have, Alan has met with the people from UMass that absolutely were in, that was two years ago-
Two years ago.
-two years ago, but we're, we are actively trying to get it going, because Alan believes it'd be a great amenity to the complex, make it a very, very desirable place if you can bike or walk to school or work.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Yes, Mr. Crowder?
I don't have a question, this is just something that, we, as part of the packet that we got, we got the application that included the record of the decision in 1966.
Yes.
Something to add to me that I just cannot let go without saying. On page, what would be seven of this packet, says the points in opposition were as follows. Number six, there are enough apartments in North Amherst already. Or seven, a decision concerning this petition should be postponed until a master plan is adopted.
So here we are.
So, I mean, just substitute, you know, housing inventory plan, or whatever that current thing is, you know, nothing new under the sun.
Wow, nice catch, Mr. Crowder.
We should have been here in 2010, but it took us a little while to get here.
Well, you're, Billy, your, your timing couldn't be better.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we're not in a position to review this in any detail, as far as telling you, you know, I, I would like to make, for the, for the planning board to make a recommendation, to, to make a statement to the Zoning Board of Appeals, that the concept as presented to us, to, not to get into the details, is in accordance with the, the scope of the master plan, in terms of the proposed use and the location, and that it would alleviate some of the pressure on our residential neighborhoods by providing appropriate rental housing for students and for other members of the community, something along those lines. I don't have prepared language, but that's more or less what I'm thinking, because I'd like, I'd like the Zoning Board of Appeals to know that we're sort of on board with this project in, in, in spirit. Mr. O'Keefe?
I think that was very well put, and I would endorse the language as stated, 100 percent.
The only thing I'd like to ask is that we go back to the zoning board with something a little more than that we're sort of on board, only that I think, I think we all, or the sense I'm getting from the board is you do really support the project in concept, maybe the design or parts of it, which is in their purview, you could give them recommendations on if you wanted, but we would appreciate it if you do something that indicates a fair amount of support for the project.
Amherst Media, you can turn the room speakers off, if the feedback's giving you pro, we can hear each other fine in here. Thank you. I don't know what I said, so.
Chris does.
You want the planning board to make a statement that the, that the concept- that the concept as presented is in accordance with the scope of the master plan, in terms of the proposed use and location, and will alleviate pressure on neighborhoods by providing rental housing for students and others. So that didn't, that was not a, an equivocal statement.
Sorry, I-
Let's wait one moment here, if you don't mind. Well, a couple of weeks ago, we had a basketball game coming through in pieces. There's got to be a volume control for those speakers. Great to be back in Amherst! I think you might have got it. That's it. You're good. Thank you.
You might have had to turn them off altogether.
Yeah, we're good. Put a label on that knob, whatever it does. Oh, thank you. All right, so where were we? I believe, Mr., Ms. Kruger?
In thinking about the motion to the, oh, we're totally off now. In thinking about the motion to the zoning board of appeals, I was, if some language, we're strongly endorsing the addition of 54 units of rental housing at this location because it meets one of the town's pressing housing needs, rather than linking it to alleviating pressure, because I, I don't know if causally we can guarantee, but we do know that we have a strong housing need for this kind of housing, and for that reason, we endorse it. I would just...
I like that better.
It's a friendly amendment, take, I know where you're going with it, but, and then we maybe want to list some of the things that you think are strengths of the concept and leave, leave the, the pick, some of the picky stuff to the ZBA.
And the strengths being?
Inclusion of an additional six units of affordable housing that we very much need, the link to the, the future bike path to UMass, the emergency egress for this development, and North Village, the addition of five handicapped accessible units to our handicapped accessible inventory, I don't have to use all those words. Other people can add.
I was going to add that it's a walkable neighborhood, and it's within walking distance to the university.
I would like to add that it has been, as far as we can tell, well, well-managed as well.
Yes.
That the management is, appears to be good, if not excellent.
A history of responsible management?
A history of responsible management.
I'd like to also not dictate what the ZBA should do, but, but include a recommendation that they, that they give priority to or seriously consider. Family housing and countable affordable housing is, is an important part of their approval of a permit.
I see nodding heads to that, I'm in agreement. You want to, Ms. Breastrop, could you read that back to us?
[laughing]
Well, we want it, we want this to be right, it's important.
All right. Ms. Kruger moved, that the planning board recommended to the ZBA that they strongly endorse the addition of 54 units because it meets the housing need. I think she said as outlined in the master plan. You didn't...
No, but that works.
That works, yeah. It includes, including the addition of housing very much needed. There's a link to the bike path, emergency egress to North Village, five handicap units. Mr. Carson said it's a walkable neighborhood, and the development will be walkable to UMass. Mr. Weber said the management appears to be good, and there's a history, history of responsible management. Mr. Crowder would like to include a recommendation that the ZBA consider requiring family housing and more SHI-eligible affordable housing.
By family, did you mean larger unit size?
Okay.
Did you get the six affordable units in there, Breastrop?
I did not, six affordable.
So we have a strong recommendation, I like that. Is there anybody on the board who, oh, is there anyone who wants to add or subtract anything from that motion that Ms. Kruger made?
I'm not suggesting that we add this, but, but should we also add that an architect should be involved, that the ZBA should take that into consideration as well?
If we add that provision, would you be in support of this, Mr. Schreiber?
Yeah.
Could we recommend an architect be involved?
They're, well, they're only licensed, that's redundant, because you're only an architect if you're licensed.
Sorry?
It's really in your best interest to have a licensed architect.
And unfortunately, I don't know the requirements or the rules, so the only way I can respond is that clearly we're going to comply with all of the state and local statutes and regulations. So we'll do that. If, if your recommendation is that we go beyond that, certainly we discuss that with the board.
Mass General Law, chapter 112, I'm sorry, section, chapter 112, section 68 through 60L is the practice of architecture?
Mm-hmm, and if it requires it, then we have to do it. There's no question.
We could recommend it, whether it's required or not.
It is required, so...
So let's add to that, I would say, I would say let's add Mr. Schreiber's statement that under state law, an architect be involved, or words to that effect.
We just recommend that an architect be involved in the design of this project?
It's a state law that an architect be involved in this project, so however the board wants to say that.
I would submit that if it is a state law, you don't have to say it, because we have to do it.
I appreciate it.
I want to make sure that you're satisfied.
Yeah, you know, really, the state law is that anything that is architecture, which is anything larger than a two-family house, or larger than 35,000 cubic feet, any commercial building must have an architect involved from preliminary plans through the, really, the completion of construction. And so there's, that's what the law says.
Mr. Crowder?
So the reason, excuse me, the reason that, to put this in our recommendation is, is to, of course, they're going to comply with law, I don't have any doubt about that, but the ZBA should also be aware that, that this is important to us.
Now what?
That it's important to us, to, that, that you are aware, and that they should be aware that an architect should be involved in, in a project of this kind. And so, so just conveying that to the ZBA is what we should do.
I agree, especially in light of, you know, I think the point is well-taken about the fire at Rolling Green last week, and fire safety is one of the, is a priority for architects, I believe.
Yeah, so architects are licensed just like engineers, not for aesthetics, but for the health, safety, and welfare, so...
Right. And I'm pretty certain, well, I know that these builders are going to be sprinkled, and I'm pretty certain that the code requires that, but they are going to be sprinkled, so they will be a step better than what we've had in the past.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. All right, I think we have it. And we have a motion, do we have a second?
Who moved? Ms. Kruger?
A second.
Second by Mr. Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? One abstention, Mr. Schreiber. Thank you, everyone, and thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for your attention, and...
Best of luck.
Hopefully, it will go well from this point.
Thank you.
I don't really need it, the ZBA has it.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell.
Good enough for me, thank you very much. Isn't that, yeah, I don't know, I think Jeff produced that.
There is no off the record, I'm sorry. You can speak into the mic, though, please.
I've been talking about that with Nels and UMass, so... Town is still interested and is promoting it, so...
I mean, that's typical.
Still working on it. Things take time. I know.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you for, for coming.
No, it's terribly rude. Holy, no, no, not spicin' up, not good.
Couldn't understand it.
All right, okay, all right, yes. All right. So the, moving back to old business, Ms. Breastrop, did we have any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the meeting?
No, sir.
Check. New business, planning board schedule. We have meetings scheduled for February 6th. We have on that day a, the review of the Wildwood Childcare Center roof. That's the, also the deadline for citizen zoning petitions. We have a meeting on February 20th. Let's see, and we decided that the public hearings for 400 Main Street and 1417 revisions would be scheduled for that date. Did we have anything else, Ms. Breastrop, on the 6th or the 20th?
I don't believe so. We will be getting a, an application from, regarding the Unitarian Church, I think I've already discussed that with you, but I had thought it would come in for the 20th, but I don't, at this point, I don't think it will.
Okay. So that's looking like we can spend some quality time with zoning. The next meetings after that are March 6th, let's see, March 11th, general bylaw petitions are due. And just to, looking ahead, we have meetings on March 20th, April 3rd, and April 17th. Town meeting begins May 6th. I don't know the deadline for our, our warning, warrant articles. March 11th is our deadline as well, okay. Anything else on the schedule? Topics not reasonably anticipated, new business? ANRs?
No ANRs tonight.
Upcoming ZBA applications?
I'm not aware of any.
Upcoming site plan reviews that we haven't already mentioned? Committee reports, PVPC?
No report.
CPAC, Sanders not here. Ag Commission, that's me. I have no report. Transportation Plan Task Force, Mr. Crowder, I know is inactive. Redevelopment Authority is inactive. ERB?
So I did miss last week's meeting, but the meeting before, we reviewed the Wildwood roof, which apparently is coming at our next meeting, and should be pretty straightforward. Just, it's, it's, you know, replacing the whole roof and an addition of a, of a new, it's a whole mechanical system that they're adding to the building, so that, that in the back, that there will be a sizable unit added to the back roof, which we'll want to look at, yeah.
We mean in the planning board, or?
Yes, yeah, it's, so you said they're, they're presenting it on the 20th, is that correct?
On the 6th.
On the 6th, so next week, so we'll see it on 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Housing and sheltering?
No report. They were supposed to meet today, and it didn't happen, it was canceled.
Okay. Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group, Ms. Anderson normally reports on this, but I happened to be present at the last meeting, so I'm going to go ahead and make my report on it. The Select Board held its first public comment period a couple of weeks ago, and it was well-attended with respect to the new general bylaw that will presumably implement rental regulation, new rental regulations, including either permit or license and various other issues. Some of the issues they are fleshing out are how to deal with inspections, and a lot of other minutia. They do not have yet a working draft of a rental regulation bylaw. They have a couple of different outlines that have been put together with, by a couple of members of the board, as well as a list of whats, hows, and whys, I think, that is really quite comprehensive, and they've taken a real top-down outline-based approach to crafting a bylaw. I think that's going to, making sure that it's workable, and they're getting input from everyone. I am really looking forward to seeing the finished result and hoping that the planning board will have some input on it. I don't know when their next meeting is, but their materials are up on the town website for review for anybody who wants to look at them. Hopefully, something will come together soon as far as a draft. And I'll make that the report of the chair as well.
The intent is for this to go to town meeting?
Yes, the, the intent is to get it before town meeting this spring. I am cautiously optimistic, given that there's no draft yet, but if they, you know, if they, they certainly have a great group of people, and hoping that they can do that in time. Any other comments on that, because I know we've been talking about it, too? I would urge anyone who's, who's interested in it to try and attend the meetings, and, yes, Ms. Breastrop?
I believe the meetings are Tuesday afternoons from 3:30 to 5:30, something like that, in this room. So, it would be on the website. I believe they're meeting every week, yes.
Thank you. Did you have a report, Ms. Breastrop?
I do not have a report.
I only have one item left on the agenda, which is adjournment. Thank you, everyone.